There you are. Thank you. Recall the role and ask people to identify by verbal sound. So we picked that up in the record. Beth Steele.
President.
Blake Powell. All right. I'm Rick Smith. I'm the chairman and Dana Oviat was there a moment ago and that's his window, so I'm expecting him back. And it may be having sign on problems. We won't see it an alternate yet because I do expect him on. In the meantime, I will read the statement that is required because this is a Zoom meeting. It's also a good time filler at the beginning. This meeting of the Knowing Zone and Commission will take place to resume remote meeting technology. My name is Rick Smith, Chairman of the Commission. The host of the meeting is Larry Dunn, who's an alternate zoning commission member. Anyone speaking should state their names prior to speaking each time or as many times as you can remember. And that is Dana Oviat back with us. So we have four commissioners at this time, which means, well, we definitely have a quorum. The participants in this meeting will be the commission members and staff persons with applications for architectural design review that have been previously submitted for consideration and the commission's counsel. At the discretion of the chairman and with the concurrence of the commission elected alternate members of the commission participate during old business during discussion of the short term rental issue. If you would like to comment or share a screen item, this is for commissioners and staff indicate by using the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen or by raising your hand visually in front of the screen. Participant will have the opportunity to speak after being called upon by the chairman. Procedurally to offer a motion or second emotion, speak up or wave your hand in front of the screen. It seems to work a little better than the raise hand icon, which often you can forget to see or miss seeing. Vote on a motion commissioners will be called upon individually by the chair. So there's a verbal oral record of it. Public can participate in the meeting as observers and at the start of the meeting during the general comments section of the agenda at which issues not on the agenda can be raised for future commission consideration. Let me make sure I see everybody so I can there and we now have Art Tanner, who is the fifth elected commissioner. So we have a full five commissioner meeting. Back to this. All participants, including commissioners and staff must identify themselves before speaking. Members of the public can also submit comments by writing to the commissioner after the meeting for consideration on any item discussed tonight, and it will be circulated to all commissioners made a part of the public record. Finally, a recording of tonight's meeting will be posted on the town of Groton's website within seven days of the meeting. Takes care of that. Now we are at public comments, issues not on the agenda. So anyone who is not a commissioner or staff, Mr. McInney, do you want to observe or do you want to speak in the public comment not on the agenda subject?
No, sir. Patrick McInney and no, sir. We will speak on the agenda. We're first up.
Oh, the design review. Okay. Thank you. Yep. All right then. Next item, application for design review is the application of Sue Greenleaf 65 Elm Street to add a 10 by 16 foot two story addition within the existing deck footprint. The OneDrive has various documents if we can skip to that, Larry.
Yep. Which one you want first?
About the sixth one down, I think is the application. Yeah, Greenleaf application. Put that up for a second so we can, everyone will know that we have everything that we're supposed to have. This is the application. Bill did sign off on it. This one doesn't have his signature, but he authorized it. The next document is actually the check off right there. And he did sign off on that and all of benchmarks were met. This one is a little unusual. They had to go to a variance, receive a variance because of a side yard setback, which they received and there that document is the record of the decision. So according to Bill, they are authorized to bring this before us and then have us do our thing with it. The next one skip back up to the page one, that first document. And let's just start there. That's how it was submitted. You may have to rotate those.
It's gonna take a while to paint.
Pardon me?
It will take a while to paint.
Yeah, yeah. Longer than when I did it. It's interesting. That because it's going off a satellite to your computer and then to us?
I have no idea where it's going, but there it is.
All right, Mr. McInney, would you like to describe this project for us?
Yes, sir. I'm Patrick McInney of Advance Group Design Bill out of Mystic, Connecticut, representing Sue Greenleaf. Yeah, so existing, so you can't see my cursor, but where the deck is existing, we are going to encroach upon the existing deck with our addition. So the if I could share my screen, that would be much more helpful. I'd be able to take it right to it and show you. Would that be possible?
Can you do that with a member of the public, Larry? Larry? You're muted, Larry.
Yeah, I know. All right, you should be able to do that now. Okay, so let me go to the prelims. So everybody can see in the screening well?
I can.
All right, this is a zoom in of the first floor, right? Right where this beam is currently the deck covers all this space here and a little bit where this bay window is. What we're doing is cutting into the deck, re-supporting it and adding this addition here that is 10 feet by 16 feet to the exterior corners. Cutting the deck back to support it and then adding this bay window. Now existing, there's a little piece of deck here that we're actually removing to make it at work, right? And we're actually creating a 15 square foot net reduction in the actual lot coverage. So if you look here, this is existing, this is I'll get real quick. This is the actual site that we're dealing with. And then sorry about that. Let me get back down. There we go. And then so we're removing this piece here and we're encroaching on our existing deck, which this deck is already here. This landing here is already here and this stair is going to be reconstructed to the new angle. So we're just replacing existing deck with this two story addition. You know, let me turn it back over. Do you have questions on what it is? We're creating.
Yeah, because we want to see the next series of the plan. You may want to get back into it and screen your own version.
All right. So then this is the first floor plan. What we're doing is putting in a supporting beam, replacing the existing deck with this 10 by 16 addition. There's no other changes to the first floor other than some minor decorating like replacing this is wood floor here. Now we're ripping up the carpet, putting wood floor in all to match for this space here.
Okay, all of that, we don't. We don't have to.
Don't care.
We don't deal with the interior renovation.
Yeah, understand. Yeah. So outside second floor is exactly the same 10 foot by 16 foot. The existing deck is remaining the same, albeit getting shorter. This landing is currently existing, albeit it will be brand new frame because right now this is the edge of deck. And the deck goes across the entire first floor in this shape right here. So it's the same width as the landing right there with that line I just drew. Let me go to the floor plan here, first floor, second floor. It'll make more sense here in two seconds. Okay, so this landing here, this square I'm putting is the existing second floor deck that is coming off and being replaced with the addition within the existing confines of the existing approved footprint. This landing will be reconstructed so that we can change the stair down to the oh, sorry, existing first floor landing. And what I just said was, there's my existing first floor landing. There's my new second story landing, but still within the existing footprint and a new stair created to land on the landing that steps down to the existing deck. And that is what this explains. So there's the new coverage. New second floor, there's the old landing line. Or the new ball straight in what I'm referring to is the existing conditions. This view right here, there's the landing I just explained. There's the existing extension pass. There's the existing stair down. Right where my hand is, there's the landing I just showed in the drawing. That will remain, this deck will remain, but this is new to be compliant because we have to change the rise and run of the stairwell to make that work. So all in all, we have the new 300 some odd feet of living, 320 feet of living space, but a reduced lot coverage of 15 square feet overall because of the removal of this little connecting piece of porch.
Larry, can you toggle back and forth between what was submitted and his documents?
I can unshare my screen.
Well, you may not have to if you can.
Okay, fair enough.
Because you may have other documents you want to show us. Look, look, there we go. Okay, Larry, in the list of the documents we have on the OneDrive.
Yep.
We'd want to see page two now.
All right, so let me, we don't need Patrick anymore. I can unshare. Let me share here. And go back to this. All right.
Okay, done with that one. So let's see page two now. There you go. Now, is there anything you need to show us on this? Because you did just now.
Yeah, I zoomed in so you could see. Cause it may be easier on my screen, but I zoomed in the existing pictures to show you the difference between what we've proposed and what is existing. And the different elevations on the lower right hand corner of your screen are the existing conditions and the elevations show the difference in the structure.
Anybody have questions on this one before we see all of them? You see the third and fourth? Okay, let's just go to the third and then the fourth and we'll get a sense of all of it. Third's up, second one, there you go. Okay, we've kind of seen this.
Yeah, on my screen.
Yeah. Go to number four, please. Larry, there you go. Okay, that's the site plan. So let's flip that so we have the right orientation. And let it fill. Okay. So apparently you had the side yard setback issue on the east side of the property, buttering that adjoining lot. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The distance from the, from the lot line to the leading edge of the existing porch is six feet two. And then the distance to our new edge of addition is going to be around 12 six. Now, the existing porch is only 10 feet 10 away roughly from the lot line, but our addition is going to be 12 feet six.
Okay, and you did variance. So
Yes, sir.
So you're clear on, we're clear on that. Okay, then let's see the last, any questions on this before we move to page five? Okay, seeing none, let's go to page five. These are the comps. Usual knowing eclectic mix of structures.
Which we are continuing.
Yes. It's the knowing way. Oh, Nip?
Yeah. I think we're continuing the issue of not showing all structures that are on properties within 150 feet of the parcel we're talking about. I see the line that's been drawn and I see it crossing onto properties that I don't think we have photographs of.
You do have.
Procedurally.
You have all the photos of all the properties within 200 feet.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Sue Greenleaf. I'm the property owner for the 65 Elm Street. So the document that showed it, it's hard to see it, but the map shows all the structures within 200 feet, and that was what was required in the application. And I received that from the information technology manager at Groton Town site. So I know that that's accurate. Then I went around and for every structure that's identified on that map, I took photos of the front yard. So those are all the structures. So it's William Street, Spicer Avenue and Elm Street, and that is it.
So to answer your question, Nip.
There's a communications problem here. The regulations call for photographs of all structures that are on lots that are within 200 feet of the lot, the application is being submitted for. I understand the diagram that Sue has submitted and I see the line on it and I see it going on to properties for which photographs have not been submitted. And I'll just say, this is not the first time we've had this issue. And I think it's more our problem than the applicants at this point in that we should be making sure that we properly instruct applicants and we get the right photographs that I'll just stop at this point. I'm not, I'm not concerned with this application. I'm concerned that our process is not working.
Help me out, Nip, just so we're better informed. Which property do you see that you don't feel is, is inside the 200 foot circle?
The north side of William Street.
Yeah.
There are two, looks like there's two lots and buildings that are slightly beyond the perimeter of the line. And I, to my eye, it looks like the line to the east crosses on to the property where the rotten park and Rex building is. And yeah, I'm, I'm just looking at this on a computer screen and it's not super clear.
So we need to have Bill be clear that it's any structure on a lot that's within 200 feet of that line. All right.
That's what the regs say.
Yeah.
And Ms. Greenleaf, I apologize. This is, this is, as I said, yeah, this is our problem. We haven't done a good job in consistently communicating this and making sure that we get what we're supposed to get.
Okay, I'll talk to Bill about that. We probably have to revise our instructions again because it's apparently just not clear. Within 200 feet of the property line of the subject property. All right, thank you. So that's the documentary evidence. Now some questions from commissioners. I have a couple. Is the, you're obviously not going up too high because you're not going higher than the existing structure. So there's no concern there. Is the siding of the house going to be similar to what it appears to be now?
Patrick McInney speaking for Sue Greenleaf. The siding is going to be an exact match. It's a, it's a hardy painted.
Okay. Anybody else have questions?
That's Dana, Dana Oviat.
Yep.
Mr. McInney, I just have a quick dumb question about the stairs that, that lead up. You have a spiral staircase inside the house. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So what's the reason for the outside stairwell?
It's a second form. It's existing already.
Yep.
And it's a safe second floor egress that allows, you know, furniture to be moved in and out. It's a great egress in case of fire. It's existing already. And I think because it's approved, it's a feature that from a comfort standpoint and safety standpoint that should not be removed.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, then is there a motion? Yeah.
Steel, I make a motion to determine that based on the potential impact on neighborhood architectural harmony and character, property values, historical integrity and our public health and safety, the level of review deemed appropriate for this application is the site plan review under section point two, section 2.26.6.5 and devote wave all specific submittal requirements that are not included in this application because they would not aid the commission in its determination of the application's compliance with section 2.26, you know, except the application is complete and to approve the application of Sue Greenleaf for a certificate of design appropriateness to add a 10 foot by 16 foot two story addition within existing deck footprint at 65 Elm Street, knowing Connecticut, because it meets a criteria set forth in section 2.26 of the zoning ordinances for the knowing fire addition.
Is there a second? Second, Nip Tanner. Okay, discussion on the motion. Anything you feel you want to add as a condition or not? Seeing none. All those in favor, raise your, now let me call that roll, get it verbal. No, Patrick, you can't vote.
I'm aware, sir. Thank you, though.
That's a yes. Beth Steele. It's a yes.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Nip Tanner.
Yes.
Dana Oviat.
Yes.
Rick Smith is a yes. So that's five to nothing. Approved. So Patrick and Sue, you can see Bill next Tuesday during his office hours to get your permit and then you get to go to the town and do the billing.
Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Well, when you know our meetings better, you will never even suggest such a thing.
Best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, review of minutes. We had two sets. February 16th and March 4th. As I had urged today, the February 16th, we went to excruciating detail on these because of the weighty purpose of them, which was to create the record for our decision on ESKR. So it almost became a literal transcript, not exactly, but close and punctuated with times so you could get it various places if you wanted to go and listen to the record yourself. So having said that, are there any questions or comments on the minutes of February 16th? Lynn is not on screen. She's, and she's muted. So I'm gonna say, ask to unmute. So, because she's gonna have to speak up. She may not be at a computer screen. Of course, she doesn't need to speak on this subject necessarily, but.
I'm here. I just thought I wasn't relevant to this part of the meeting.
All right. So Beth, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to comment on page three of six on the minutes for March 10th. March 16. I guess March 10.
No, 16th.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute, it's February 16th or March 4th? Those are the two. Let's make sure we're talking about the right document.
Yeah. Okay, February 16th, I'm sorry, on the top of the page, it says Wednesday, March 10th, and that's why it's throwing me off.
That's the date of creation. Yeah.
February 16th. Minutes, page three, the comments that were described to me. The third line from the bottom of my comments. There was something, I guess, that you could not, it was unintelligible, you said. I would just end the sentence after, but she felt it was not period. And I would take out because it's just continuing on with the existing problem, question mark, unintelligible.
So, and what she felt it was not.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We will make those changes before we submit them. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none without objection, then we will call them approved. Okay, the minutes of March 4th then.
I have February 16th and March 16th. Oh, the fourth was a special meeting, wasn't it?
Yeah. It was an attachment to what I sent you.
Yeah, I opened them all up. Hold on, let me.
I hope I didn't send the wrong one.
March 4th, there it is.
Okay, there we are. Yeah, this was our special executive session, special meeting executive session. So the So the, it's a very brief set of minutes. Nonetheless, if you see something that's out of order, say so. Blake?
The only thing, I don't recall seeing anywhere where it mentioned that John Casey was part of the meeting. Unless I missed it.
Well, that's a, that's a good catch if it doesn't say that because I missed that entirely. Can you scroll to the top, please, Larry? Right where we have the, oh, yeah, we got to work on these. Oh, here we are. Okay.
Right there.
Lynn, Sue, Larry, you're right. Okay, we need to add in there that Commission Counsel John Casey was also present. We will do that before approval. That's a real good catch. Thank you. Other comments, questions? Seeing none without any objection, we'll call those approved with the change to add John Casey as an attendee. Okay, so that takes care of two sets of minutes. Now the CEO report. It's right in front of you. There we are. So you can read that for a minute and see if you have questions that I can answer. That might not happen. Beth?
That's still, do we know what property permit 2021-13 is for?
I remember seeing that, I thought. Sue, do you remember if, if there was an address associated with that? I don't, but we can find that address and put it in there.
I don't either, but we can find it.
All right. That address for 2021-13 Johnson. Okay. Any other questions, comments on this? Seeing none without objection, we'll call that one approved. Approved with change. Okay. Okay, we're now at Old Business Short Term Rental and we do not have John Casey yet. He had a City of Groton meeting that he thought he would be done with at 7:30. So we're gonna tap dance a little bit. One thing we can discuss in public on, on this, I intended to do it after we went into and out of executive session is to see if you have any further views on how we roll out and start to get formal public comment. Last meeting, we had pretty much agreed that we would have a we would call it a special meeting with public input involved as opposed to a workshop. That has a slightly different connotation. The ones we had in August and September of 2019 were special meetings with public input invited. So we could run it as an informal public hearing. It can be interactive between us who pretty much are basically saying anybody who shows up, if they're called upon, they live within the rules we set, time and so forth. We can have that be an interactive meeting as opposed to the formal public hearing, which will come later and it'll be more regimented, but also we won't have much opportunity to make changes that are substantive after the formal public hearing. So it's important to get everything lined up right in the, in the informal part of the process. Originally, we had talked about late March for that. I think that's gonna slide. Hard to say because we haven't had tonight's session. I alone, and I haven't talked to anybody else about this, but I have other things I'd like to talk to the commission about once we go back in public session, about the details and how we justify what we propose. One of the things John has pointed out to me is we'll be the applicant here. And as the applicant, we have to put our proposal forward, which is basically the justification for what we are proposing. And if you think about that a minute, because this is a legislative function that we're in, this whole draft is our proposal. But we're gonna have to have basically not evidence as much as justification for the various things we're proposing. And I haven't yet talked to him about whether that means it's a line-by-line thing where you say we're proposing this measure and then you have a little paragraph that says why we're proposing. I don't know if it has to be that detailed or it can be a more of a consolidated document, but that remains to be seen. So those are when you think strategically about getting a good amount of public input. Those are the kinds of things I've been wrestling with. Actually, the other one is the idea of putting a preliminary document out that essentially is an email to Nancy Gilmore's email list that says here's what we've been doing in case a lot of people, you know, not everybody follows this subject. So most lot do, but not everyone. So it would basically say, this is what we've been up to for two years. Here's what we're about to propose. Here's how you can comment and, and and then when we have the formal package that we take, that we introduce the public to for the public meeting to get the public input, that'll be email blast number two. Here's the document. Here's whatever supporting information we want to offer and, and the meeting is two weeks from now. So it's kind of, I envision it as a two-step process. So I'm, I'm just encouraging if people have other ideas on doing it differently, adding, subtracting. I'd very much like to hear them.
Rick?
Yes.
Have you thought, have you thought anymore? Has anybody thought anymore about how you get the word out that the workshop is actually occurring? I would, Nancy, for example, Nancy Gilmore's email list doesn't necessarily go out to all Noank. I don't know who it goes out to, but you have to ask her to send you one. And I'd like to bring up the, the possibility of a newspaper article once again to get it publicized.
I thought about doing that a, a long time ago and then I realized I'm not sure I want to broadcast to the world that we do this. I want to make sure No anchors are very well informed on, and by that I mean property owners as well as people who just live here. Maybe they're renters, but you know, the catch-all No anchors. I really want to make sure they're aware of what we're doing. Some sort of an op-ed to the paper is, you know, we could do that. I, I question its value frankly. But I'm open to suggestion. That's why I haven't pursued that in my own mind more, just my reluctance to create a whole bunch of people that may be very interested, but they're not affected by the, you know, a regulation in Noank.
Yeah, and I see your point of view exactly. I just want to make sure that everybody in Noank is going to get notified on what's going on and when it is and how you join and how, and what the ground rules are for joining in and to giving and forgiving your opinion.
Yeah. Well, there is another way and we have to be a little careful. We don't have a, a formal quote government Facebook page. But when this email goes out from Nancy Gilmore, people that do have such things, they're totally welcome to. It's a public document and, and like Ed Johnson has a, a pretty well-read Facebook page. If he wants to put it out to people who are on his list and capture some, some that may not be on Nancy's list, that's all to the good. There's nothing wrong with it. I wouldn't want to formally use that as our communication tool because a person who's not on Ed's list could claim, well, you know, I wasn't notified. They only used this partial list. Which is why Nancy's email list becomes the, the best source of, for government to put the word out, imperfect though it is. I mean, 750 families in Noank. She has about 350 on the list. That's pretty good, but it's only half. Larry?
Yeah, two, two quick questions.
Very done.
Very done administratively. One is is there a legal requirement, because there normally is one, to put a announcement of the public hearing in the newspaper? It's not an article, we'll get to that, but just a announcement for that. And number two is, in the execution of the meeting, can you make it a requirement that only people with a Noank address can speak at that meeting?
First question first, classified ad, we legally have to do that for the formal public hearing. We do not have to do it for the the public meeting to, to invite the public, the informal one. The legal requirement for that one is very sparse. You have to post it on the Town of Groton's website. And you have to post it at the firehouse. And the law expects people who are interested in the subject to get wind of it that way. And that's why Nip had been a champion of, gee, we got to do better than that back years ago. Which is why we started to use Nancy's email list as a better way of getting up to people. So the classified ad is a legal requirement, but not for the first of these two meetings. Second question is, I'm pretty sure John told me, no, if, if you have a, a public meeting, you can't really say you're not from Noank, you can't speak. I will double check that with him again, but I, I seem to recall that, that raised some problems that you might want, not want to get into, but I could be not remembering it either. Only people from Noank can speak. Ask John. Okay, I will do that. Who's that, please? Nip?
One thing we can do to be helpful in that regard is anyone who speaks should give their address. And to the extent that the commissioners are implying to give more weight to somebody who lives in Noank than to somebody who lives in Stonington, it would give us a basis to do that.
That, that's a fair point, and I know we can do that because in the formal public hearing, it's required. So we can certainly put that standard in play. So if they, if they have to legally be allowed to speak, at least we'll know from once they come. That's a good point. Okay, other questions, comments on this? And still no John. Anything that you would like to ask or discuss that is in the realm of, well, I have one. Well, you guys go first. I can think of a couple of things that I would like to talk about in public as a planning process that the public is entitled, perfectly entitled to know. I'm gonna write them down so I don't forget them. Okay, anybody else? Are you dying in anticipation? The next thing I'm gonna spit out. Okay, I'll go. Two things I think we need to do after we get done with making sure we're on a good legal foundation is to go back preamble. I spent 33 years implementing regulations and that's not bragging, that's almost shame. They can really tie you in a knot if they're too complicated. They will take all your time and people will be confused by them. And there, there's a lot of downside to complicated multifaceted regulations. On the other hand, we debated long and hard everything that's in this proposal and we all think all of it has merit or it wouldn't be in there in the first place. I would like, at least at a, a meeting after we tie down the, the legality issues to go through it and filter it by is this thing, is this provision really enforceable and is it really necessary? And is it going to confuse things more than help things? If we could pare some stuff out of there and it met those standards, I think we'd have a better document. Because the shorter it is and the clearer it is, the more easily it'll be understood by the public and then maybe actually even agreed upon by many of the public members. It will never be agreed to by everyone and we know that. So that would be first step, go through, pare it down, filter it. The second thing, Lynn had suggested a couple of times matching our measures to our goals to make sure, and this gets back to what I had said before about having a record of support for our proposal. To the extent that everything matches well to our goals, we have a, a more supportable document both for the public to understand why we're doing what we're doing, but also if we ever get sued on this, that record is very important. It says to a, a court, here's our reasons for proposing what we did. And some people don't like it, so they've sued. That's their right, but here are our reasons. If they're really good reasons, we're gonna prevail. And if they're poorly thought out or not defensible, we might not prevail. So I think it's important to, to go through that step as well. And then frankly, after we get done with John, I think all of us need to reflect one last time as to whether the measures in the proposal are really something we support or having heard anything that we've heard, we decide yeah, I was for that, but now I can't. Or I didn't care about this thing, but now I think it ought to be in there, even though I didn't think so before. So I think we have a couple of meetings ahead of us to do those kind of things before we then allow the public to say what they think about it. Sorry, that's so long-winded, but it's taken a while to form the views to. Any thoughts? I'm trying to write down what I said so I don't forget it.
Lynn Marshall, just to move things along, I will say that I agree with everything you've said, Rick.
Okay. All right. There must be a barn burner over there in Groton or John would be with us by now. I don't even think I have his phone number. I guess I do. Let me just text him and see if.
I'm doing okay, thank you. Yeah.
All right, I just texted. Hopefully I'm not hitting him mid-conversation in the heat of the moment, but rather think I might be catching him in transit going from one place to another. Anything else for the good of the order?
Hey, Rick.
Yeah.
Do you want to take a fifteen minute recess?
We could as long as I'll stay on because if John joins us, I don't want him to see.
I'll leave it open.
Oh, okay. Yeah, well, let's do that. Let's say, you know, check back in at eight o'clock. How's that? He thought he'd be done by seven thirty, so that'll give him a half hour of of going over. So I'll come back in at eight o'clock. Good, good suggestion. Point was simply logistic, but let's make sure there's no harm in recording it. So we're back in session. We're not talking about the the council. Discussion that's on the agenda. We're waiting for our council to join us. And we're talking about a procedural improvement to architectural design review. So that the applicant better understands what it is that we require and so that we clearly state it. So that's what we're in the process of discussing now for anyone who reviews the record. I'm sorry, Lynn, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say on, I was getting into design review, perhaps I shouldn't about a comment about the simplicity.
What about it?
I'll go ahead. So one thing that is is confusing. And necessarily so because of the structure of the regulations is that parking's in this section. This is in this section. That's in that section. And that's the structure of our regulations, but. It might be really not ea- much easier for an applicant. To to see those in one set of instructions that could be handed out to them. Where everything is taken from the regulations, but just put all together because it's it's really hard when you, you know, if you're not familiar with the regulations, they have to go here and there and the other. Put it all together.
Not sure I understand you. Architects usually ask for the regulations and they read them so they know everything they need. Sometimes when you have a homeowner doing it, we have a one page handout that tells them what they need to do. That may not be as clear as it needs to be. Bill and I just revised it once in January. To try and capture this thing better. We'll have to look at it again because of Nip's point earlier that we may still not have it.
I was going on another step and saying, I think we're right into the same thing with short term rentals. It's going to be difficult because.
It's not talk about short term rentals. It's loaded and.
All right.
Yeah.
Hey, Rick.
Yep, yes, Nip Tanner.
Just, just for your. When you work with Bill to amend his checklist. In section two point two six point one, second paragraph. Last sentence. That's where the.
Say it again, two point two six point what?
Point one. Second paragraph, last sentence.
The African shall provide also provide the commission all required comparative information regarding lots. Within two hundred feet of the lot, which. Well, that doesn't even say anything about structures. So I guess the front end of that paragraph does. Yeah, the drawings. Okay.
I think somewhere else we say. Photographs of all, you know, relevant structures on. Property.
Actually, we talked about that one of those past meetings when we discussed this. They're not actually required to provide photos. There. It can be drawings. But I think your point is valid here that it needs to be. Information that they provide on any lot within two hundred feet of the lot on which the development is proposed. Has to be the same kind of information in the front end of that paragraph.
Yeah.
Whatever it may be. Yeah. Nothing from John. Well, let's go back offline and come back at twenty five past and see if he's back by then. How's that? And at eight thirty, we can decide whether we're going to. Gain anything of value, even if he gets on at eight thirty or whether we should just reschedule. I mean, if you want to go. Right up to nine and decide I'm okay with that. If you got back at quarter and nine, would we want to go forty five minutes or an hour? The people who work for a living need sleep. I get that. You're muted, Beth.
I'm done at nine and quite frankly, my feeling is if he's not on by eight thirty.
Yeah.
We're just wasting our time at this point.
It would, it would piecemeal it. We'd have to have another session anyway. It's probably better to reschedule. Yeah, Nip.
I agree wholeheartedly with that.
Somehow I thought you would.
Of course.
I know, but I, it's going to be a lively discussion when I figure out what happened. Either something really bad happened. Or something really important from business or God forbid, he forgot. We'll figure out tomorrow which one it is. So let's come back at twenty five past. How's that? Because it's pretty obvious it's going to happen. Three choices. We could do it next Tuesday or next Thursday or two weeks from tonight. Two weeks from tonight would be the worst one for me logistically. Next Tuesday, you know, it's hard to get the agenda out and get everything all lined up and do it, but we could do that. Thursday would be two days better. So. Anybody have a thought on those? And that's all subject to John being available.
What were the choices again?
Thursday the twenty fifth.
Tuesday, the twenty third, Thursday, the twenty fifth or Tuesday, the thirtieth.
It doesn't matter.
Beth said doesn't matter. What did you say, Nick?
They all work for me.
All work, okay. Well, let's do chairman's preference. If we're rescheduling, let's do the twenty fifth because I know I can be in a closed room and. Not get interrupted. Otherwise, I don't know what I'd do. So we'll do that. And it is eight thirty. So unless you want to change your mind, I will take a motion. Let me just look at the agenda again. We talked about public input. Okay, if there's no other business, somebody make a motion and we'll off we'll go. Beth Steele offers a motion to adjourn. Nip Tanner seconds. All those in favor say aye. Move your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you all. Sorry, it wasn't more productive, but. We'll do it again next Thursday and that'll be a special meeting. Only purpose, it'll be like we did on March fourth. The only purpose will be. To hear John and discuss with John. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.